All right, good evening. This is Eastline Board of Selectmen's Special Meeting for the purposes of Budget Review. Eastline Mount Hall Upper Meeting Room, February 5th. It's five o'clock. And, um, you can rise and proceed. Let's go to the Legion.
I put a wish to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God in invisible liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, uh, tonight, we're gonna be reviewing three budgets. The first is the Commission on Aging, uh, and that is, uh, Tab Section 418. Do we have a presentation tonight?
Yes.
Okay, please approach the podium.
Good evening, I'm Kristin Karamanica, the Director of the Senior Center.
Evening.
Do you want to click it? All right, I have, um, the PowerPoint here for everybody.
Okay.
All right, so our, um, budget for fiscal year 2026 is pretty status quo. I will go through the PowerPoint and then any questions, um, 'cause all of the pages kind of, um, go hand in hand, okay? One change, um, is our social work position is going to be moving over to Youth and Family and Human Services, so that you won't see, um, under my budget for this year. Um, so, first one, operating budget. So what I'm highlighting here is transportation. This is the, really, the only change in my budget. Part-time drivers, um, modest increase to seventy-one point five hours' worth of driving time, um, and also, um, trying to be competitive with salaries to keep our drivers here. So that would be an increase to twenty-one seventy-five per hour. So the preliminary projection is eighty thousand three oh one. Um, and I just wanted to highlight some key aspects of our transportation. Um, it, by us providing transportation, it reduces the isolation for folks, improve, improves healthy outcomes. We bring to medical appointments groceries. It enhances social engagement, uh, health insurance. So by providing transportation, um, folks are able to access services such as health insurance, energy assistance, renters rebates, um, and one, um, is our Parkinson's group. There's many, but these are the ones that I wish to highlight. Yeah, I think we're good to go on to...
So are you adding a bus driver? Is that what you're saying?
So, no. So, right now, we have all part-time drivers. So, we have three buses, um, and most days, we have two buses running. On occasion, we need a third bus. So no matter how many drivers I have, um, it's still the same amount of, you know, hours. So I could have six, seven drivers, but only two are working, you know, um, a day.
Okay.
So my capital project is, um, we applied again for the fifty-three-ten grant bus, and, um, so the Connecticut DOT will fund eighty percent. So, right now, they're supposed to be funding eighty percent of federal shares with twenty percent local match, but with what's happening right now, um, with federal grants, we're not really sure, um, if this is gonna happen or not. But I went yesterday and met with the DOT, um, for the procurement meeting, um, to get ready for our bus to come, which would be in July. So we would owe about, um, our portion of it would be about thirty thousand dollars. So I did have to cut some things, 'cause the prices went up on that bus, um, but I cut them to keep it within budget. So I just put some facts here. How many clients we served in 2024 was about a hundred and forty-five people. Total miles for the year was thirty-two thousand one forty-one. Average mile, uh, monthly mileage is about two thousand six hundred and seventy-eight miles. Total number of riders is two thousand, um, nine eighty-six. Average monthly ridership is about two forty-nine. Total number of rides was five thousand six oh nine. Average monthly rides about four hundred and sixty-seven. Uh, the useful life of a bus is five years, um, or a hundred and fifty thousand miles. So our 2017 bus is the one we would replace with this new bus. It has ninety-three thousand, uh, two hundred and eighty-seven miles. Um, we'll keep our 2021 bus with fifty-six thousand three fifty-seven miles, and the 2024 bus, um, is our new bus that we just received this year, but we had been waiting for that bus for a couple of years. Um, and then we also have the Dial-A-Ride program. And with that program, folks, um, get mileage reimbursement, um, if they have somebody they know that can drive them. Um, and that's, and Dial-A-Ride is only strictly for medical rides, not to the grocery store haircuts or local rides, it's strictly medical. And actual provisions of rides, so covering, um, like an Uber, not an Uber, but a, uh, some kind of, um, a cab service. And they served three hundred and six clients. Uh, three hundred and six clients are registered with Dial-A-Ride from Eastlime. Um, they served eighty-eight, um, served for last year. Um, seven hundred and sixteen were taxi or delivery trips, and a hundred and fifty-six are received the caregiver mileage reimbursement. We also put out for our bus, a, um, for transportation, an appeal letter, um, and we usually get a few thousand dollars with our appeal letter. And actually, I just got today, we just received another check for like five hundred dollars, and we just put the appeal letter out in January. So already this year, we've received, um, and this is just since the letter went out in January of 2025, um, one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
Can I just ask a question? It says here, um, under new bus, the useful life is five years or a hundred and fifty thousand miles, and you wanna replace the bus that, from 2017?
Correct.
With ninety-three thousand miles?
Yep, but it's five years, and it is, our garage can confirm it's falling apart. And then, yesterday, when I met with, um, the salesman, he said it's, he had a bus in Florida, and it's twelve years old and it looked brand-new, and he has a bus here that's six years old, and it's just a mess because of the weather with the salt.
I was about to say, 'cause of the snow.
Yeah.
Where are the buses stored?
So we store them still at the police department.
So it's outside?
Yep.
Okay.
They're outside, and, um, that also adds a whole nother, um, like a half an hour a day to each driver, because they don't start at the Senior Center, they start at the police department. So they go to the police department, they get the keys for the bus, and we have to keep them there for, um, safety, 'cause we had some issues with the catalytic converters a few years ago. So, um, so that does add on driving time every day to our drivers. So they go there, they have to go inside to get the keys, and then they start their bus, and then, you know, a lot of times, they just pick up people starting there, but then eventually, they need to come to the Senior Center, you know, to either drop people or to see us, um, but...
There's no place inside that you can store the buses?
Not that I'm aware of, no, and we still don't feel safe enough to keep them at the Senior Center.
Oh, yeah, no, that...
Yeah. Uh, and then, the next slide, I just wanted to put some, um, facts about the senior population. So the state of Connecticut, for, um, this is based on the sixty-plus population, so twenty-three percent of the state of Connecticut is, um, over sixty. In Eastlime, it's thirty-two percent. And then, nearly fifty-eight million Americans are sixty-five and older, with projections estimating that the population of older adults will grow to eighty-eight point eight million in 2060. So, one, on average, a sixty-five-year-old can expect to live another eighteen point nine years. Um, and the largest age group in Connecticut was age fifty-five to fifty-nine years old, according to 2018-2022 American Community Survey. And then I can go to the next slide, Kevin. Um, so Eastlime Senior Housing, um, so we have a total of five hundred and sixty-three, um, units in Eastlime. And that's just units, that's not the number of people living, living in them. So any questions? Um, I have another slide, but it's my ten, ten-year projection, um, kind of my wishlist. So I'll just go through this real quick. So, um, one thing we'd love to do is renovate the Senior Center. All around us, everybody's renovating, um, or doing additions or building new ones, um, so I'm hoping in the next ten years, that would be something we could do. Like to, one thing we don't have is a dedicated health service area, um, we're in much need of that. We do, um, blood pressure checks, we do, um, VNA comes in and they do toenail clippings, we have haircuts, um, we do massages, um, we do all kinds of things, and it'd be so nice for us to be able to have a dedicated spot for that. New furniture, our furniture is original in the dining room. It'd be nice to have, you know, furniture where, um, the tables would fall down and we could, um, collapse them quicker and get to the next program quicker, 'cause, 'cause right now, our, um, tables, we have to fold them and, um, stack them, and it takes a lot of time, um, for a custodian to do that, whereas if we had tables with wheels, we can just push them aside and get our next program, like, up and going quicker. See, increased in number of attendees, of course, um, increased innovative quality program, increased services, um, more community outreach advocacy, um, housing alternatives, um, aging in place, livable communities, uh, transportation again. Um, it'd be great to have, right now, we require at least twenty-four hours, um, notice to book a ride. New bus, I put that for the capital project. Staffing, um, I see some places going to evenings and weekends. Kitchen staff, right now, it's all run by volunteers or the current staff. It'd be nice to have a transportation coordinator. And then marketing, just improved community awareness and branding. Then it just wrote, "Expect growth in demand due to growth of population that Eastlime Senior Center serves." Questions? I know it's a lot of...
And just at the, at the start, you know, the budget, the budget that you attached is different than what's in our books. I wanna reconcile. I have three twenty-four, one ninety-seven, as the twenty, uh, as the First Selectman proposed, twenty-twenty-six, in our budget books, but on your handout is three twenty-four, three fifty-four.
Yeah. It's on your last page, Kevin.
It looks as though you're trying to push more money into the budget. That was last week.
It looks like it's the miscellaneous supplies. In the budget book, it's twenty-six hundred, in the handout, I see twenty-three hundred. I think that's the only discrepancy.
Noah, look at the top.
More?
Yeah, the Senior Center Director, Department Head Request was eighty-two thousand ninety-five, and then the First Selectman Proposed eighty-four, three fifty-three.
Yeah, but that...
But that's different than what's in the book.
I have it as the same in the book.
In the book? Mine says this Department Head Requested eighty-four, three fifty-three, First Selectman Proposed eighty-four, three fifty-three.
The twenty-twenty-six Department?
I mean, could that be just an increase?
Yeah, okay, but...
Yeah, it's different.
All right, it's loose.
But we're looking...
Which one, yeah, I guess...
I think he's going by, did these numbers go by what First Selectman proposed, right?
All right, I can reconcile this.
Okay.
Everybody settle down.
Thank you, Kevin.
So what we're looking at here...
We're not accounting.
So, it's okay, so, um, initially, the eighty-two oh ninety-five, uh, zero ninety-five, that was a flat, um, non-affiliated... I think you're wearing something metal, just stick, just go away, a few seconds away. All right, perfect. That interferes with metal for whatever reason. Okay, so the eighty-two ninety-five original, um, that was flat, but all non-affiliates across the board are getting a two-seven-five GWI increase, so that's why it went up to eighty-four, three fifty-three. Second line, um, we had discussions, really, I think that, I think the hours didn't change, but in discussions in the First Selectman's, uh, budget meeting we had, we increased the hourly rate to retain some of these bus drivers. Other towns are paying twenty-two to twenty-four dollars an hour, we were paying, in some cases, eighteen dollars an hour, and these individuals are going just to other cities and other towns to be, to do the bus driving, just 'cause we're getting outcompeted here. So that adjustment you see there from seventy-four thousand to eighty thousand dollars is not an increase in service, but is an increase in those individuals that are bus drivers, seven, uh, on July 1st going up to twenty-one seventy-five, which is still kind of at the lower range, um, but we recognize this is gonna have to be a multi-year process to get them in line with other communities.
And the GWI you said was how much?
Two point seven-five. So that first line's going up two point seven-five percent. And then, the admin line there, going from one sixty to one forty-eight, um, like mentioned, that was, I think, half of the social worker was in there, um, and then there was just some adjustments there. So I think, um, those numbers, to what we have, the one forty-eight, nine seventy-six, uh, that ties to the individual salaries that are there now. So it's a little, it's forty, we're talking forty dollars and forty-three dollars difference.
So what's in our budget book is, is the current?
Correct, yep.
Is the one we should look at.
Yep, I tidied it out to the individual's current salary, so it's just a little, the forty dollars is just the, you know, rounding error there. Um, and then, at the bottom there, we did cut back the miscellaneous supplies from twenty-eight hundred to twenty-six hundred, just to get it close to a three percent budget increase. That three percent budget increase is before we tack on, um, whatever is negotiated for the up-sue employees. In this particular budget, there is two or three? Two, two, uh, two, uh, up-sue employees in this budget, so that three percent right now will be a little higher once we negotiate and come to an agreement with our, uh, up-sue employees.
And that social worker that's moving to the other group is not reflected in this budget's increase or decrease at all, right?
It is not reflected in this budget now, it is now reflected in the Youth and Family Services Budget. In the proposed budget, the, the position went, I think right now, it's thirty, thirty hour, it was originally thirty hours, it went up to thirty-seven and a half, and in the proposed budget, we cut it to twenty-eight hours.
Okay.
So, just so everyone is aware of that.
Thank you for reconciling.
Yeah, thank you.
So it's the supplies, uh, that, that is the one that's, that's different?
Yeah, it's, there's two hundred dollars at the bottom that's different, and then there was a forty dollar adjustment at the top of the, of that, that spreadsheet there you're looking at.
So if you refer to the, to the booklet, that's the most accurate at this point.
Okay.
Yep. Phil, any, we just will start, was there any questions, comments?
No, I was questioning the reduction in supplies.
Okay.
And I'm wondering what impact that would have, as opposed to just to figure, what impact does that have on what you would be able to do?
Just the cost of everything has gone up, so that's why I put in for an increase of just a few hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Jason?
I'm just curious about the bus. Why, why is it said that it's falling apart? I mean, what specifically seems to be the issue?
I mean, just even, just the exterior, and it's been in for some problems, um, but it is, if you would see it, you'd see the rust on it, and it's just, and, um, like the step to get in, and it's just, it's, it's time, it's had its useful life.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's my question.
And if we were to have to replace the bus ourselves, it's a hundred and thirty-three dol, a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
So what would happen to the bus?
So we'll sell the bus, right? Um, but the state has to take a certain portion of it.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, so this bus is under a federal grant, um, the five-three-ten grant, so we pay twenty percent of this bus.
Oh, that's good.
Right. Right, it's about thirty thousand, right?
Yeah, I think we budgeted thirty-five, just in case we have to put letters on it or any little last-minute contingency items, um, so...
And that's a, a federal grant?
This is a federal grant. It's a federal pass-through, so it's a federal grant that the state administers through the DOT.
And we're hopeful that that won't be disturbed, but...
That's what I was just gonna ask.
Or hopeful.
I mean, the, the bus we just got, would, was it twenty-twenty-two we filled out the papers for that? So it took two years to get that bus?
It did. I think it was twenty-one.
Yeah, it might even have been longer than that. Yeah, so, that bus took three years to get, so...
Do you, what kind of bus is it, like, the brand, do you know?
It's a Ford. Same bus that we have, that we just got.
Is it similar to the bus when we took our field trip? Yeah.
Yep.
That's...
Yep, same bus. Yep. And next year, I won't apply for one, 'cause we won't qualify for one for next year. So, but then the following year, the following year, I'm gonna try to go for, um, a minibus. It's a little, um, narrower and shorter, um, but will still fit and hold twelve people. It's just easier to drive. Salesman yesterday said that. I don't know if you wanna get one, because the drivers are gonna fight over that bus. Everybody wants to drive it.
Is that a transit?
It's a transit, yeah, but it's called a minibus. It's not a van, it's a, it's still a bus.
So on the issue, to continue on the issue of the bus, if we don't get the federal funding, then we are stuck with the bus that we have?
No.
I think this federal funding's already been approved. I think this particular grant we've, was last year's allotment of funds, so I don't think this has, I don't think that's in jeopardy.
Oh, so you have to get the federal funding before you can approach us to put it in the, in the budget? Is that how that works? Because we were talking about it yesterday at the CIP meeting, and that's what they were saying, that they need to...
Well, that's for the Board of, that's for a state grant, that's for state reimbursement of the school construction projects. This one, um, I believe was passed, this allotment of funds is from the, from last year's federal dispersment of the grants. So what we're, you know, so we just sat in a procurement meeting last month.
Yeah.
Had to go over this.
Two weeks ago.
And then, just yesterday, I believe you said, to actually build the bus, build it to spec of how we want it.
But he said he wasn't sure what could hap, you know, anything could happen.
Yeah.
So, we're talking about uncertainty here that is coming from the federal government because of President Trump's initial memo and then removing the memo a few days later. That is still kind of causing uncertainty, even though that memo has been rescinded? Just because we're not sure what could happen? Is that correct?
Well, apparently, this one is already in the pipeline, so we'll probably be okay on this, at least that's a hope, so...
Yeah.
I'm very optimistic.
Yeah.
Well, if we don't, if we don't get the grant, then we're gonna have to put money into the existing bus. So we should leave money in the budget. If we don't need it, we can always pull it out. Because that bus is going to have, if we have to stick with that bus, then we're gonna have to have repairs done on that bus, particularly the steps and things that in no time are going to be unsafe, so...
So are you, are you proposing a change in this budget?
I thought it was my understanding that, that we already were, were given this grant. Is that correct? Maybe we need clarification, Kevin.
So we did get the grant.
Yeah.
We do have the grant.
Correct.
We, we do have the grant. Yes, we were approved.
Yep, so this thirty-five thousand, currently, you're, we're looking at the, uh, operating budget right now, that thirty-five thousand is in the cash capital. So it's in the capital projects budget, it's, uh, we're, they're deliberating tomorrow, but it's, you know, it's still in there right now.
Yep.
It's eighty, you know, the bus is eighty percent off.
Yeah, exactly.
To the town of Eastlime, so that's a, that's pretty good use of funds.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
So, and it will take, it's gonna take at least a year to get here.
Yeah, we could, we could have it in July, but, yeah, I know.
They said that last time, it took three years.
I'm being optimistic.
Yeah.
But that's not really in front of us on the operating budget, it's anything else.
Yeah, exactly. I was just trying to...
Yeah.
...resist Roseanne's concerns.
My only question would be on your appeal, that you've, you've got a thousand dollars so far, that's a great idea. As a baby boomer, I read an article the other day that we also love to be asked, rather than being told, to donate. How are you soliciting that money?
So we write a letter every year, it goes out to all the riders, and then we post it.
What about the general public? How about...
We post it in the Senior Center as well.
I'm just thinking of a general mailer, uh, to everybody in that age group, there is a lot of money there, that, like I said, we, we like to be asked, rather than told via tax, the tax route. So I think that's a great avenue, that people wanna help their own town and have their name on something, whatever, but, um, if you solicit that, I think, to everybody, even, we're not using the Senate, I'm not, I don't use the Senior Center, not yet.
All right, no, that's a great suggestion.
I appreciate it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And I want to question, Candace, um, do you have any questions?
Hi, everyone. No, I don't have any questions, and thank you for all you do, the presentation was very good, thank you.
Thank you, Candace.
I don't have anything further, and we've already talked, uh, when we met, so I'm satisfied. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation, thanks for all that you do. Done. And next will be Section 420, Culture and Recreation, Eastlime Public Library. Good evening, Lisa.
Good evening.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Yeah, that'd be helpful. I didn't know we could bring slides.
Oh, thank you.
Next year, we'll come prepared. We're moving up here in the town. Okay. We'll make up for it next year. We have what? Yep.
Oh, wait, here's, they gave me two.
Yeah, I thought I had enough for everyone.
Be sure.
All right, um, well, Christopher, Christopher is our Assistant Director, he's been with us just about a year now. What he's handing out to you is our annual report. Libraries often are thought of as a place to go and get a check on a book and come back. I don't wanna spend a lot of time tonight going over all the things we do, we do quite a bit, and it's in this booklet, so if you wanna take a chance, look at it later and see what we do. Two of the highlights are that we circulate Wi-Fi spots for people in town who don't have internets, internet connections at home. Um, we, we bought two, and they were so popular that we are now up to twelve, um, that we're circulating. We have that many people in town that don't have internet at home, so we meet that need. We also circulate, uh, Wi-Fi to Brookside Farm, we provide it for them, and occasionally for Parks and Rec for some of their events downtown. We'll set aside hot, uh, Wi-Fi hotspots to do that. We also help the Historical Society, uh, we help a lot of other, uh, departments in town, so I just wanted to point that out, uh, we're not just a place to, to check out books. This year's budget is a little complicated. I, there's, in here is a sheet, uh, page one, uh, when I did the calculations for the initial budget in September, it turned out that we were gonna need a very large increase. What happened was not so much spending, but a revenue problem. In past years, we have carried forward quite a bit of money, and that was able to take, uh, lessen the amount that we asked for from the town. Most of that came from, um, health insurance and pension estimations. What happens is, because we are not a town department, I, Kevin tells me, or the Finance Director tells me, what kind of money to set aside for health insurance and pension each year, I set aside that. Months and months later in the summer, when we get the actual number, sometimes it's higher than that, sometimes it's lower than that. For quite a few years, it was, um, we had extra money there, and you'll see, uh, on page one of the handout that I gave you, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, we actually came back to, and asked for less money. I took that money and, and set it forward. We didn't hide it, we didn't spend it, we, we used that. This year, it went the other way. The health insurance and the pension went up twenty-five thousand dollars, almost twenty-six thousand dollars, which wiped out the increase that we got from the town last year. You'll see there on fiscal year twenty-five, we, I got about a two percent increase last year, but when you take into account, um, the health insurance and the pension, um, bills that came in much higher than we expected, we're actually operating with almost two thousand dollars less this year than we had last year. So it's been pretty tight at the library. When I discovered this problem, I sat down with Kevin and Dan and some, um, members of the Board of Trustees for the library, and we just talked about where we're going and what was happening. Kevin was helpful, he immediately said that we can take the pension payments and that the town will cover those for the library, um, so that they're not just giving us money that we then give back, and we hope it's the right amount or not the right amount. That will now operate the way other town departments do. If it, if it comes back less money, the town will do that, and it doesn't come out of the library budget. The health insurance is a little more complicated, we can't quite do that, but we're keeping an eye on it and trying to figure out how we can go forward. The, the handout that I gave you, page one here, has, um, is just full transparency, what we've carried forward, the percent of our budget that's, that's left over, um, anywhere from zero percent, or zero point seven... anywhere from 0%, or 0.7, 0.17, or an up to 8 last year. We do carefully watch our money, and we do come in on budget every year. But on that first page is the information on what happened there. Is that a fair assessment of what we've got? Okay.
Can I just ask a question?
Yep.
On the page one.
Mm-hmm.
What is that $1,801? It's in red, it's on?
Yeah, that's, the increase that we got from the town last year, the subsidy we have for this year, fiscal year '25, when we, where's my notes? We got an increase of $25,800 additional money from you last year in this budget. When the health insurance and the pension came in, we were actually, that's how much? We were short on those. So it wiped out all of our increase for last year, and we had to come up with another $2,000 to cover the pension and the.
Okay, understood.
Health insurance. So we're operating with less money this year than we had last year, so. We've done a few things to, you know, there is, there's some good news. We are ordering less adult nonfiction. We subscribe to a database that analyzes our circulation patterns down to the Dewey numbers, and we're tracking to see what books we don't have to buy, because adult nonfiction tends to be expensive. I've cut that budget pretty much in half this year so far, and we're hoping to hold that to give us a little cushion for the next year. We invested some of our static money into CDs. Static money is capital funds that I inherited when I became director 13 years ago. There's just money that the libraries had. We don't usually come to the town for capital. We buy our own computers, we buy our own furniture, we do all that. And we use that fund. Since we don't usually spend it, we put that into CDs. We have an unemployment fund, a short one, and our funded, I don't wanna say, vacation time and sick.
Crude time off?
Crude time off, yes. We invested those in CDs, and we've gotten about $4,000 this year from that. And sadly, our gifts and memorials are up this year. We lost two former board members and several citizens in town who have passed away and asked for donations to go to the library, and we've gotten quite a few of those this year. So we're limping through. But what you see on here is what we're gonna need just to stay flat for next year. It's a 9% increase. On the second page, if you turn that page over, is just, again, full transparency. This is everything that is increasing in price over the next year, and where that money's going, why we have to have an increase. Our door counts are up. Fiscal year '23, we had 68,000 and change visits. Fiscal year '24, we had 71,300, and fiscal year '25, we're on target for 81,700, if, using the data from the first half of this fiscal year. We have a fantastic staff. I've been there at the library 21 years now, 22 years. I think we have the best staff that we've had in 22 years. We've pulled in some young people that have some really good ideas and are quite competent. And just like Kristen, our space is a problem. We are limiting services because we don't have space to put programs and things that we'd like to do, because we just don't have the space to do them. So in sum, we've got a revenue problem, not a spending problem, and we're trying to get through this year and muddling our way through.
Roseanne, do you have any questions?
Trace? My only question is, I don't know what Overdrive is. I'm familiar with Hoopla.
Overdrive is the vendor that we get our eBooks from. We lie in consortium, we belong to a library consortium, 30 libraries in central, southern Connecticut. We all go in and we give money to Overdrive, and we get our eBooks from that. That's been a big issue the past few years, because the publishing companies charge libraries three to four times what they charge regular consumers for an eBook. We'll pay $90, $100 for an eBook, and we don't get to keep it. It gets leased for 26 circulations, and then we have to buy it at that price again. So the Overdrive budget, I did pull that out, and there's a separate line for that this year, because I wanted to track that a little more closely. One of the things I'm doing in cutting back on money this year is, we have some money to spend on eBooks that, for just Eastline, that we can send out, but I don't want to reward the publishers for charging us four times what they charge everyone else for books, so I've been holding on to that money. The libraries, in, public libraries in the state are working on a bill, Senate Bill 1234, to have publishers not be able to charge us, because it's a waste of taxpayer money. The Lion Consortium that we belong to, over the past four or five years, the money that they've spent on eBooks that have evaporated because they're leased and not owned is over $1 million. And so we're working with the state government to try to get some action on accountability to the publishers for doing that. But that's what Overdrive is for.
It's not a public-facing platform like Hoopla. It's a separate kind of.
Oh, sure it is. Libby is, the app is Libby.
Oh.
That's the front for Overdrive, and you can borrow eBooks. Unfortunately, for most of the bestsellers, there's a six-month to two-year wait because of, we can't afford. We increased, Lion increased its expenses 700% to try to meet needs, and we can't do it because of what they're doing, so. Hoopla has a large number of eBooks that are available anytime, so that's become more popular, but we're paying a lot more money for that, too. That's going up. So there's two different places you can get eBooks online with your Eastline Public Library card. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I use them both. I just didn't know that Libby and Overdrive were.
Yeah, they, yeah, they changed it a few years, the app. I'm not sure why. Overdrive is kind of cumbersome. Libby seemed a little more easy. I don't know, so.
Have you notified our local elected representatives at the state level to advocate for that bill?
Yes, actually, I spoke with Holly last year, literally while she was on the floor voting on it. I was texting her. And I did have a conversation with Nick Menofais already about that, and a bunch of the libraries today are signing letters. The bill's going into discussion on Friday up in the state legislature, and a bunch of us have signed a letter saying that we are in support of this bill because we need, we need something to give in that situation.
What's the bill called again?
Senate Bill 1234, and it's an Act Concerning eBook Pricing, or something like, I don't know the exact term. But it's basically telling publishers that they can't, you know, charge us four or five times what they charge anyone else for an eBook, because it's a misuse of taxpayer funds. So it's been brought up for three or four years. It's been not passed for three or four years. We're a little more optimistic this year. There are 13 other states that are also trying to do this. We're hoping that Connecticut will be the first. But it is a national concern that librarians have, we've, you know, talked and brought this up in other state legislatures as well.
Would it be helpful at all if there were a letter sent from the Board of Selectmen?
Sure. If you are interested, I can certainly let you know how to do that, or anyone in the public. I have sent the information out to the Board of Trustees of the library as well, but the more letters, the better from the public right now.
Well, if you could send that information to the, to Mr. Cunningham?
I will. Okay.
That's Bill 1234, right?
Yep, 1234, Senate Bill 1234. It has been agreed to, they're discussing it on Friday for its initial approach.
All right, thank you. Candace, or, I'm sorry, Candace, will you just go down there?
You said that you had caught buying, you said, is it nonfiction books in half?
Yeah, the adult nonfiction, because those are the most expensive. The fiction and the children's book, we get pretty steep discounts on with the National Jobbers that we use for books that serve public libraries. Nonfiction, because it's often got graphs and colored pictures and other things. We often don't get as big a discount, so they're much more expensive. They also don't circulate as much as other books in the library, other genres. The new database that we have through the Lion Consortium is letting us analyze down to the Dewey number, what books go out and what books don't. So we have a better sense, if I'm on the fence about something, of not getting it, if I know that it's something that doesn't really circ well in our community. And being part of Lion, if I know Old Lime has the book, there's no reason for us to get it.
That was my question.
Yeah, it'll be here in two days.
You check to make sure that the other library has it.
Yeah, if someone else has it, I'm not sure. We can get it in two days. I'm not buying it. We're not spending money on it this year. Yeah, I mean, some bestsellers, you're gonna have, you know, there's certain, especially in an election year like we just had, a lot of political books come out of the blue from left and right.
Yeah.
And we get those because they're popular. But if there's a book, again, that, you know, I think maybe, maybe not, and another Lion Library has it, I don't get it. And so we've been able to, we used to spend about $2,000 a month on nonfiction books. We've got it down to about $1,000 for most of this year, so I'm trying to pull some money from that to get us through this year, and hopefully have enough of a carryforward for next year. Like I said, we're operating $2,000 less than what we thought we were gonna be, and I'm still hoping to carry $10,000 over. So, technical supplies is out of control because of inflation, everything's gone up, so we're trying to buy a little bit less certain things.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, two questions, please.
Mm-hmm.
We'll start with this one. The eBooks, that sometimes if they're popular, they could take six months or two years to. Is there, is there a format where, and I know in the library it's not supposed to be this, but where the consumer could buy from you and download from you and pay you a fee to download that directly?
You mean the consumer would pay for the library to get it?
I.e. Amazon. You know, are you comparable or cheaper, your buy rate, than say, if I bought the same book on Amazon?
I'm not sure I understand.
You said some of the books are eBooks?
Right, yeah, the eBooks are.
Okay, so somebody were to download that book.
Mm-hmm.
Would it, could, would it be feasible for the consumer to buy that book?
Well, they'd have to pay $25. They don't pay anything if they use their library card, but they'd have to wait longer. We have long waiting lists for the bestsellers because there's, we can't keep up with demand in the eBook.
Help me here. Just, there's unlimited eBooks, though, right?
Uh, no.
No.
Okay, so if we buy like, you know.
Yeah, you have to buy every eBook, yeah.
Yeah, each eBook can only circulate once to one person.
Right.
We can't, we can't send it out. Well, in Overdrive, Libby, if we have a book, only one person can have that out at a time. In Hoopla, multiple people can have the same book out at the same time, so it's confusing. There's two different, and it's done two different ways.
I'm saying, some people, the fee is normal, and we're not object to paying the fee.
Yeah, I'm sure we do. We have people who are buying their own eBooks, because for $25, they don't want to wait a year and a half on the waiting list. So, but that's not the case.
Because if you buy it, if you go on Amazon and you buy it, you're gonna pay, what, $3, $4, maybe $9?
For an eBook, no, 15.
15, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
But the library, for you to get an eBook.
It's, it can be up to 100, or a little bit more. That's what we pay for the same.
We can rent it out 26 times?
26 times, but we are also, because it's through Lion, all of the Lion libraries, all of the patrons, it's about a million people in Connecticut, are in that consortium waiting for that book. However, all the libraries also put in money.
Yep, yep.
So we might have, you know, 100 copies of a book, but we might have 250 people on the waiting list, because it's a Lion-wide thing, as opposed to just an Eastline. I do have a separate set of money to buy eBooks for Eastline that will circulate to our residents first. We can, you know, for the top bestsellers, buy a few and give them to people in Eastline before, and then they default to Lion if there's any circulations left. I haven't been spending on that this year, because it's, it's just, it doesn't help, you know, it's just a drop in the ocean, and we need that $6,000 for other things right now. I want to see how the state legislature is gonna shake out with this before I spend the town's money on that.
And the next item, now, the other question I had was the money. Is that shown in the gifts and memorials?
Yes.
The money that you have in CDs, where's?
That is in the interest.
How much money we're talking here, that you said you have in CDs?
The interest we got from them was, we got just under $4,000 in interest. I want to say there's 60,000? I don't have, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but we do have some money invested in CDs that we had just laying around in savings.
Okay.
I can get you an exact number if you want me to.
If you estimate 60,000, that's.
Yeah, whatever, whatever will give off 4,000 in a year, so we have been able to raise a little additional funding for the library through that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Candace, do you have any further questions?
I have no questions, and I just want to thank everybody for their patience for me not being in person tonight. Wednesday night, Lincoln has his wrestling matches, so I'm doing a dual role here. So, thank you for the patience in allowing me to zoom in for tonight. Thank you.
Of course. Congratulations to Lincoln and all his triumphs and his.
Thank you so much. He's breaking records all over the place.
Yeah, that's what I understand, so that's wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, our budget's, you know, a little bit complicated and a little different, so if you have any questions, my office is always open. You can pick up the phone, give an email, or just stop by my office anytime, and I'll be happy to talk to you in further if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Lisa. I think we're all, I think we're all set. Thank you. So those are the three budgets we were going to review tonight?
Nope, those are only two, Dan.
For me?
You got Park and Rec left.
Oh, I didn't do Park, oh, I'm sorry, Jerry. Gee, I thought we were really moving through this. Wonder why I was going so smooth? So next is Parks and Rec, and that is Section 421.
All right, I'll let Kevin pull up the presentation. On your desks there, you should have a hard copy of our budget notes for today. Thank you. I'm Jerry Loggins. I'm the Park and Rec Director. With me here tonight is Rob Tukey. He's the Chairman of the Park and Rec Commission. And I will say that the Parks and Rec Commission does agree with the First Selectment on strategic focus on maintenance over expansion. So just wanted to call that out. That was something that came out of the commission a while ago, and the budget that we prepared reflects that.
Great.
That intent. So just to give everybody just a little bit of a scope before we get into that, that's great, you can keep that slide up there, but we have about 20 properties that Parks and Rec maintains, and if you're counting parks in town, you'll know that we don't have 20 parks in town. About half of the properties that we maintain are not parks, so Town Hall, Public Safety, Methodist Street, you know, historical properties around town, those are things that are not parks, but our parks' operation does maintain. So we just actually added another one yesterday, Flanders Fire Department. We're now snowplowing that because of the ambulance service is moving on. Our parks' service just, our operation just added another property yesterday, so that kind of happens throughout the year. As, as things change in the town, we still have a job to do, so things get added to our plate. In addition to that, you know, the common things that we have, the ball fields, dozens of ball fields, three beaches, the boardwalk, Parks and Rec programs, concerts and events, all kinds of things that the department does. So with that, on your, the first slide here, we have a couple of different ways that we fund those operations. The first is obviously with the General Fund, that funds our parks' operation and our full-time staff. Most of what we do in terms of programs and events, and things like Celebrating Slime and the parade, concerts at the beach, summer camp, those things, those are covered by the Special Revenue Fund. So fees that we charge for those events pay for those events. So when people pay for a beach pass, it pays for the lifeguards on the beach. When people sign up for an aerobics class, it pays for the aerobics class. When people pay a fee to get a booth at Celebrate Eastline, that pays for Celebrate Eastline. So those things do not impact the tax rate, and I just want to make sure everybody is, is very clear with that. And then, of course, we have capital funds that we do to maintain our facilities and to purchase vehicles. So I think another one of the priorities that the First Selectment shared with everybody today was, you know, kind of the difference between wants and needs. We had a meeting with our department staff, department head staff today, and I guess, you know, lots of people made sense that Parks and Rec is a want, a nice-to-have. I'm here to actually do my best to convince you that that's not the case. We're not a, we're not a want. We are a need. In fact, our residents tell us that. In the Plan of Conservation and Development, three of the top four services that people in town use are parks. Beaches, the boardwalk, and fields. Three of the top four things in the Plan of Conservation and Development, based on a survey of town residents. This is an expectation that people have. They, they expect to have a certain quality of life to live here in town. These are things that they are telling us they want. Actually, they're telling us that they need. They're here because of the quality of life, and as you see the bottom point there, we directly contribute to the quality of life in this community. So on, on to the next slide there, please, Kevin. Our budget is really kind of boring. The only change that we have, significant change that we have over last year, change that we have over last year, is we are trading a full-time administrative secretary who just retired. We're not replacing that full-time administrative secretary. Rather, we're going to replace it with a full-time parks maintainer in next year's budget. Our park staff has been perennially understaffed and under-resourced. We have all of these properties that I just talked about, these 20 properties around town are not receiving the level of care that they need to be maintained in the way that the community requires. So fortunately, you know, with today's technology, a lot of things are happening online. So the needs of our administrative function in our office is less than our need for a full-time person on the ground out there maintaining properties. So what we will be doing, though, is we'll be hiring a part-time person to come in and fill in during peak times for that administrative duties. So we do have an increase in seasonal labor to cover that. But in the First Selectmen's budget, you know, we've already gone through one iteration of this, and we've already made cuts to a lot of our park operations. Six different accounts saw cuts for park maintenance and materials and things like that in, in the First Selectmen's iteration of the, of the budget. And, you know, as I talked with the First Selectmen and the Finance Director, you know, those I view as, you know, required. They're asking, you know, my job as the director is to request what we need to maintain the town parks. You have to weigh that against the town's ability to pay. So I'm not here to criticize the First Selectmen or the Finance Director or anything like that. We will do the best we can, maintain the most that we can with the resources that we're given. But I'm just here to let you know that, based on my professional recommendation, we're not going to receive, you know, everything that we need in the next year's budget, but we are going to use those resources that we are given in the most effective way that we can to provide the most service we can for our citizens. With the next, I guess, not next slide, I've got it ahead of myself. The special revenue fund, just to let you know, that's going to just continue the way it has been. We're going to continue to operate those beaches. We're going to continue to offer those concerts and events, and we're going to continue to operate the recreation programs. The challenge there is to build fund balance. And just like the town, on a global, on this huge scale, the special revenue fund has a desire to build fund balance, to make our operations safe and sustainable year after year so we can kind of moderate the bumps. Our special revenue fund, a target for me for fund balance is about $150,000, which is about 20% of our operating expenses for a year. Right now, we're maybe a third of that. So we have to, you know, build that fund balance over the next several years to, you know, to make it safe and sustainable. I will call out that the special revenue fund, even in this last year, has helped subsidize the town operations by paying for a portion of the renovation at Vets Field. And we also just, just today, got our truck back with a brand-new sander on it that the special revenue fund helped to pay for. So tomorrow, when it snows, that truck is going to be on the road putting some salt and sand down with something that the special revenue fund helped to provide. Okay, so on to capital projects. So a couple of things that we are asking for in the CIP Committee has heard all of these requests. You see the McCook Seawall repair. We are hoping to do the engineering and permitting studies next year. It's about $40,000 to do that. We want to get ready. And then the following year, we would actually be doing construction that could be something like $400,000. So not next year, but the year after, we'll be looking for the larger expense. And at Parets Park, we have a baseball field that we are in need of repairing, just like we're doing at Vets. We need to do another ball field at Parets Park to bring it up to a safe and playable condition. The First Selectmen also talked about doing things strategically. One of the things that the Park and Rec Department has never done, at least to my knowledge, has had a master plan to guide us for like a 10-year period. What do we want to focus on, and how do we want to strategically place ourselves to move forward with that? So that project is also in the CIP. And the Park Improvement Plan, that is $50,000 that we request every year. And we use it for kind of the highest-needs, smaller projects. And you can see a few of the possibilities listed there. Well-surging parking lot, striping, refinishing the band shell, things like that. I will just let you know, in the current year, we've done about almost 10 park improvement projects that have been completed, from grills and picnic tables at McCook Point Park, to shower towers for the beaches, repairing some facilities at Bridebrook Park, swim buoys and lines for McCook Point Park Beach, and, and again, renovations for the fields. So with that, we got the capital vehicle replacements, and I have replacement listed for each one of these essential pieces of equipment. There is nothing new. We're not adding to the fleet. These are vehicles that are on the schedule to be replaced. Every piece of capital equipment that the parks crew uses is on a scheduled for replacement. So if you're curious about what those things are, you can look on, in the capital, the 10-year capital plan, and you'll see everything from that infield groomer lasts 10 years, and we need to buy that every 10 years, the chemical sprayer lasts 15 years, or the landscape trailer lasts eight years, or whatever it is. Those things are all on a scheduled replacement, just like, you know, I heard Kristin talking about the senior center bus. Every year, you know, it lasts five years or 150,000 miles. The same thing with these vehicles. They last a certain number of years, and we put them on to replace it. So we continue to operate efficiently and to allow our staff members to have the resources they need to do their job. So with that, in a 10-year projection, I mentioned the McCook Seawall is an up-and-coming thing. Parets Park at Bridebrook, those of you who took our tour for this, before the CIP Committee, you know, we went and we looked at the restrooms at Bridebrook Park. That park sees thousands of people, sometimes every, you know, on a weekend in the summer, or in the spring or fall even. We have, you know, two toilets for the women and two toilets for the men, and thousands of people in that park. You know, that's, that's not necessarily meeting the needs of the, of the public. And so that's kind of a, a large thing that, that is coming down the, you know, it's a need. It's something that, it's been pushed off for a few years now, but at a certain point, we're not going to be able to push that off anymore. I mean, we're going to have to replace that building. And certainly, we have a Darryl Pond master plan that calls for a lot of development out there at Darryl Pond. As we've discussed, maintenance over new initiatives, that's kind of why the Parks and Rec Commission has decided to, you know, postpone those improvements. We have a plan. We know what can be done out there at Darryl. But instead of adding to the, to the plate, we are looking to maintain what we have first. So with that, and I guess I'll, I'd be remiss if I didn't call out the Dog Park construction. At some point, the Dog Park Subcommittee is going to be in a position to kind of propose that Dog Park construction. They plan to fundraise for a majority of the cost, but it's likely that at some point, there may be some town investment that's needed in developing that park when the, when the plans become finalized. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or refer you to our Chairman, Mr. Tukey, if he would care to chime in on those.
Thank you, Jerry. We'll just, we'll just start with one. Roseanne, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't at this point.
Okay. Jason?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to take a moment to, I guess, grandstand and just say how important the parks have been to me personally, and my family, and other people that I know in the community. From my kids when they were toddlers, walking around, to, you know, youth sports, there's, there's not a lot of places that young people can get together and gather and interact these days. And sports is, seems to be an oasis of places for these people to go. So, you know, young, youth athletes, it's just a really important facet for youth culture in our, in our town. But beyond that, I mean, older athletes are getting into pickleball, and we have these pickleball courts. So the entire lifespan, the entire population can access these, these spaces. And Dan and I together have put on musical concerts at the band show a number of times. So just having that culture, that center of culture right in this beautiful oceanfront area, you know, you talk about wants and needs. You can, you can do that with anything, but when you cut to the bone, you might, you know, lose your soul, right? Like you, I want parks. I need parks. So they're both, and I'm happy to support you here. That's it. That's all. My grandstanding is over.
Thank you, Jason. Ken?
I just have one question. When you say there's Bridebrook field renovations, can you just go into a little more detail about what that would look like?
Yeah, so the Bridebrook renovations really is the baseball field at Bridebrook Park. That field does not currently drain appropriately, and it's often, once a rain event happens, it's unplayable for several days. So just like the renovations that we did at Vets, where we renovate the fields, bring in different material that drains faster, is easier to maintain, safer, better playing surface, that's exactly what we would be doing on the, the baseball field at Bridebrook.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The only comment I have is, not to grandstand, but I think that the system in place that the senior center has now with the buses, yesterday, the CIP, we talked about compressors on top of the school buildings at one, every, rather than have a big, huge bundle fall at once, that, that you stay on top of the target, that you want your projects, remind us that it's already in, in there. So we don't have a bunch come all at once. And that the timely replacement of capital items on a window or a calendar is a very, very good system.
Thank you for that comment, Don. And I, we've actually spent a great deal of time doing just that. So, you know, like, looking out future years, we absolutely want to avoid any kind of a spike. So every given year, the number of vehicles that we purchase or whatever, those are two factors that we've taken into account. One is what's the expected life, and the other is how can we, you know, cheat them one year forward or back to kind of keep that, you know, that nice even, you know, budget request year after year, so we don't see the spikes.
Because the spike will generate a tax increase.
Correct.
And the next year, when we don't need it, that tax will still be there. And that's, that's the big resistance today, much like electrical power. That's a very sensitive subject. So that's, that's a very good program. Secondly, I see the demographics that they show for the concerts. Would it hurt to pass a buck in there?
In fact, we've actually done that. We've even had Park and Rec Commissioners sit down there at the entrance to the concert, kind of when they, you know, donate to the music in the parks.
Like in church, embarrass the guy beside you, pass it around, make sure if he puts money in, I got to put money in too.
In fact, we absolutely do that. And I guess I would just point out the fact that when we do that, it helps the special revenue fund. It does not help the tax rate. Because of course-
I understand. That's perfect.
Yep. But yes, I just want to make sure everybody's, you know, we got people watching hopefully on TV, but recognize that those concerts are not funded by tax dollars. They are funded by people that donate or other money that we bring in for operating the beaches.
Thanks.
Yep.
One more question. When you replace the vehicles, what do you do with the old vehicles?
The old vehicles get sold at public auction, and the money gets returned to the town's-
General Fund.
-coffer.
Okay.
Fund 3, the money comes back to us, but it goes into the capital nonrecurring, otherwise known as cash capital fund. And once we hit, once that number, you know, is a couple hundred thousand, we use that to offset taxes the following year. So in our current budget, this year, fiscal year 2025, what we're in, we're going to have $900,000 of cash capital. The budget we're going to present later tonight has $1.35 million of cash capital. If it comes in higher than 1.3, if the CIP Committee recommends a package and the cash capital's more than the 1.35 million, we'll, we'll analyze what's in the cash capital fund, because there has been some vehicles and assets that have been sold the last year to offset any increase before we increase, you know, we, we ask the operating budget to kick in money, we'll, we'll look what's in that fund. So when vehicles are sold, the cash is put into this fund balance of the capital nonrecurring fund, and in the future years, it's used to fund new purchases of vehicles.
So items that were, so let me get this right. So items that were capital items that are sold, are liquidated, it goes back into the capital?
Well, any item that's sold. I mean, anything that's sold in town.
Yeah.
When, when the sale happens, it goes into a sale of assets in our Fund 32, our cash capital fund.
So it doesn't go into the operating fund?
Correct.
Okay, I was saying, correct. Okay, great.
I just wanted to-
No, thank you. No, straight, get this-
Mostly everything else goes in the general fund, but the sale of assets goes into the capital nonrecurring fund.
Great.
So we want to increase this cash capital, correct?
Correct. That's the goal. Yep.
A little, a little later on, we're going to really explore that. Candace, any comments?
I have no comments and no questions. Thank you for the presentation very much.
Thank you, Candace.
I'd like to go back to the first thing that you brought up under the operating expenses, replacing the full-time administrative secretary. So I notice under the list of things that are going to be done, none of those seem to fit the job description of what the administrative secretary would do. So who's going to actually do that secretarial work?
I'm not su, I, we're going to hire a part-time person to fulfill those jobs of the administrative secretary during those peak times when we need that office help. So I'm not sure what, where you said the list that, of things that, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Yes, we have the list here, but all of the things that are going to be done by eliminating the administrative secretary don't seem to have anything to do with the job that I would assume the administrative secretary is doing.
I think, okay, maybe, I'm not looking at the slide right now, but I believe you're talking about maybe-
Is under operating expenses, replace the full-time administrative secretary?
Okay, so really, the, the reason we're making the, eliminating the secretary is to add a full-time maintainer in the parks who will do those things, meet the increased workload from those new properties and those other properties that we discussed. So the bullet underneath that refers to what the maintainer will do, not to what the secretary does. We're changing an office position for a, a field position essentially. And those are things that we need additional help with.
Okay, I understand that. But the job of the administrative secretary does not seem to be, those work requirements don't seem to fit the description of what's going to happen after that position's eliminated.
Correct. That's the next bullet down. We're going to hire a seasonal person to fulfill the needs of the administrative duties.
On the park.
The full-time administrative secretary retired, so that position is open. And instead of filling that position, we're going to take the funds that we would have paid that administrative secretary, and we're going to put those funds towards a field person, a field maintainer, somebody who's out there, you know, doing the work in the parks. So, you know, we're swapping one full-time position for another full-time position, and then we're going to use seasonal staff to help maintain the office during peak times.
So just, essentially, we're shifting a benefited position from in the administrative, inside the office, to adding another person outside. We're, so we're adding, you know, a part-time admin assistant to the budget, but there's no benefits to be added there. So that was the big, the big thing was the benefits.
That affects a cost savings.
Oh, yeah, that's, you know, $40,000, $50,000.
Any other comments? Being done. Jerry, thank you so much. And I want to thank you for your, you know, your help in achieving this budget and your willingness to, to work with me and Kevin and come up with creative ways to keep, keep things running and, you know, still make- and come up with creative ways to keep, to keep things running and, and still maintain our costs. So thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. All right, so I jumped the gun before, but so here are motions to adjourn our, this part of the meeting, all right?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the-
Hey, Rob.
...meeting, special budget meeting at 6:10 PM.
Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Two seconds, okay? On favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned until 7 o'clock.